I hereby call the second day of the second special session of the 23rd Congress to order. May we all rise for a moment of silent prayer. Okay, Chief Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Senator Abella Alfonso.
Casalelliya Mayng, Aye Mayng.
Senator Arriados. Senator Asher. Senator Christian. Senator Figuerre. Senator Collin.
Ah, yes.
Senator Conman.
Mezeng Ma.
Floor Leader Lawrence.
Aye Mayng.
Senator Marar. Senator Numea.
Yes.
Vice Speaker Romolo. Senator Segura.
Good morning.
Senator Urosamal. Speaker Moses.
Aye.
Mr. Speaker, 13 members are present.
With that, we have a quorum. Next item, Chief Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. We're now on the reading of the Journal, item four.
Floor Leader Lawrence.
Good morning, Speaker, honorable members. I move that we dispense with the reading of the Journal.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress dispense with the reading of the Journal. Discussion? No discussion, no objection. We will vote on said motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion carried. Congress has now dispensed with the reading of the Journal. Next item, Chief Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. We're now on item number five, Presidential Communications. We are in receipt of numbers 23-225 to number 23-266.
Thank you. Chairman, Chairpeople, please take note. We have some important grants and nominations to take care of. Next item, Chief Clerk.
Item six, FASM Supreme Court Communications. As of now, we do not have any, Mr. Speaker.
Continue.
Item seven, Member Communications, none. Item eight, Departmental Communications, we are in receipt of numbers 23-41 to number 23-48.
Thank you. Continue.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. We're now on item number nine, Agency or Governmental Authority Communications. We have numbers 23-80, 18 to number 23-23.
Thank you. Continue.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. We're now on item number 10, State Communications. We have numbers 23-27 to number 23-32.
Thank you. Continue.
Item 11, State Supreme Court Communications. As of now, we do not have any, Mr. Speaker.
Chairman Collin, you have?
Yes, Speaker, the order of business on mine is incomplete.
Short recess. Congress is back in session. Continue, Chief Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. We're now on item number 12, Municipal or Town Communications. We are in receipt of numbers 23-04 and number 23-05.
Continue.
Item 13, Foreign Government Communications. We have numbers 23-55 to number 23-69.
Continue.
Item 14, Miscellaneous Communications. We have two of them, and they are numbers 23-8 and number 23-9.
Order of the day?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Under the order of the day, we have item number 15, Standing Committee Reports. As of now, we do not have any reports, Mr. Speaker.
Next item.
Item 16, Special Committee Reports. We have one, and it's number 23-06, by the Committee to Wait on the President.
Short recess. We are on the Special Committee Reports. Madam Chair, Abiliya Alfonso.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. The Special Committee Report number 23-06 has been passed to all members. I wish to report that the Committee to Wait on the President.
Um, short recess. Congress is back in session. Madam Chair, Abiliya Alfonso.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I wish to place the, to move adoption of the Special Committee Report number 23-06.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress adopt Special Committee Report number 23-06. Discussion? Madam Chair, Abiliya Alfonso.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. The Special Committee to Wait on the President consisted of your chairperson along with the rest of the members, which included Chairman Figuerre, Vice Speaker Romolo, Senator Segura. All joined the meeting yesterday as scheduled at 1:00 P.M. And I am pleased to report that the meeting went very smoothly. There were several issues that were, actually a lot of issues that were touched on by the President and his, and Vice President. The report shows all the issues that were discussed, but I would just like to highlight on several points there that were raised during our meeting yesterday, Speaker, just for the, in the interest of time. I'll be briefly touching on several of the matters that were raised that are of importance or priority on our part. The first item on the agenda that was touched was the Emergency Declaration that was issued. His Excellency President, President Semina, expressed the need to extend the Emergency Declaration and seek supports, the support of Congress in extending the Emergency Declaration. He went on to express his sincere appreciation for the 500,000 that was appropriated by Congress in response to the declaration. He further shared that 1.2 million initially targeted for the Supreme Court annex also was decreed for the disaster relief funds. So roughly 2 million has been, roughly the 500,000 has been fully expended, and there is another 2 million that is anticipated to be used for this purpose. It was expressed that Cochei State has not issued an emergency declaration, and it is anticipated that this may come in the forthcoming month should the drought situation worsen for Cochei State. On this note, he did express that he wishes that Congress would extend the emergency declaration in the, perhaps up to the coming session of Congress this coming May. President also made mention of the Financial Relief Fund from ADP that is approximately around 8 million that is aimed partially for the long-term use to rehabilitate water resources and to ensure that water security is secured for the whole nation. Going on on the matter of the revenue report, clarification was sought from your Committee to Wait on the President regarding this, and it was stated that the revenue that was used was 8% of the sector grant instead of the 10%. And I think this was an issue, Mr. Speaker, that you requested for clarification to be sought from the President and Vice President. He went on to further, they went on to further share that the audit report for fiscal year 22 has been completed and apologized, Vice President expressed apologies on the delay in the fiscal year 2025 budget that was supposed to be submitted on April 1st, and assured that the fiscal year 2025 budget would be submitted as of midnight last night, yesterday. So we should be expecting that soon. It was also expressed that the Semina and Poli administration are aware of the challenges that this nation faces as far as fiscal, fiscal prudency is concerned, and they have shared certain policy decisions that they have used in guidelines for the fiscal year 2025 budget, trying to maintain a strict budget cuts to adhere to the 2029 budget that was used, fiscal year 2019 levels that was used. Among these, they mentioned that the operational budget has no increase, and they have cut travel by 15%, 50%, keeping only those that are essential to the objectives and the goals of the department. Fixed assets will remain the same. No new vehicles will be purchased except those that have been, that are desperately needed, and the activation of the performance review to ensure those on contractual services will be moved to the public service system eventually. Current vacancies, of course, will be kept until such time that these vacancies are deemed appropriate to be removed after a certain period of time. As far as the terms of the contract, terms of the, excuse me. Sought on the terms of the contract that was sought, whether Congress should legislate anything for the implementation of the 2023 compact, Mr. President has expressed that at the moment, there is no need for Congress to legislate anything for that purpose. Basically, in short, what he expressed what was that budget would be forwarded to Congress, and it would be prudent for Congress to act on the budget, and they would take it from there and present that to JEMCO. Number four that was touched on was the role of the JCRP. It was expressed that the signing of the compact has signaled the, basically, the end of the mandated role of the JCRP. And we wanted clarification on whether the role of JCRP is essential and needed moving forward. President has expressed that the initial proposal presented to Congress was a request for a one-year funding for JCRP, which Congress cut to six months. So it appears there is still budget for JCRP up to the month of July. Thereafter, they may, they, we have expressed that selected members of JCRP may be gradually transitioned out, and perhaps the core members may be kept. It was emphasized that, it is hoped that A&amp;P Services would be continued in lieu of the critical need for the negotiations of their legal expertise regarding negotiations that are still ongoing for Veterans Affairs and the SSI, which I understand is the Supplemental Security Income. I think a lot of the issues have been outlined in the report, but just to touch briefly on it, other issues that were expressed by the President was the urgency for Congress to act on the pending nominations that have been in front of Congress for the past few months. This also includes the bills and legislations that he hopes Congress to act upon, which is the decentralization of the PMU, the Marine Spatial Planning Blue Prosperity Legislation. And of course, this is in line with the amendment that has recently been passed on the healthy environment that Congress have proposed on. Mr. Speaker, I think that in the interest of time, I think I have just highlighted the issues that were raised before we went to meet with the President as per your recommendation to clarify. I leave it up to the rest of the committee members if they have anything that they may wish to add. I think last but not the least, Mr. Speaker, I would like to mention the fact that the President has also shared that there was an invitation extended by President Biden for all the presidents of the freely associated states to visit President Biden on May 9th and on May 10th. In this regard, President expresses and requests if Congress perhaps may consider delaying our May session by a few days to enable him to travel to and from that meeting. In closing, I would like to give the floor to the rest of the members who may wish to add on to what I may have missed on what they feel should be highlighted in the report. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Any further discussion? No further discussion? If none, question has been called for, and no objections, we will vote on the adoption of Special Committee Report number 23-06. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Motion carried. Congress has now adopted Special Committee Report number 23-06. Next Special Committee Report, Chief Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. We do not have any more Special Committee Reports.
Next item.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. We're now on item number 17, for our assignment of measures and communications. Please refer to referral sheet number 23-39.
Chairs and members, please take note of the referral sheet. Next item, Chief Clerk.
Item 18, Unfinished Business. As of now, we do not have any, Mr. Speaker.
Next item.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. We're now on the Bill Calendar for item number 19. The first bill under the Bill Calendar now is Congressional Bill number 23-75 for first reading. CB number 23-75 is a bill for knock to further amend section 208 of Title 52 of the Code of the Federated States of Magnesia, annotated as amended by Public Law number 18-114 to reduce the cost of living allowance to zero and for other purposes.
Chairman Ortiz. It's been moved and seconded that Congress defer its action on CB number 23-75. Discussion? No objection. We will vote on said motion. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Motion carried. Congress has deferred its action on CB number 23-75 to Friday's calendar. Next bill, Chief Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Under the Bill Calendar now is Congressional Bill number 23-11CD1 for first reading. Please note that this is attached to Standing Committee Report number 23-52. It was deferred from last session to this session. CB number 23-11CD1 is a bill for knock to further amend Title 54 of the Code of the Federated States of Magnesia, annotated as amended by creating a new Chapter 11 to prohibit the importation and exportation of nicotine delivery systems, including e-cigarettes into the Federated States of Magnesia for commercial activity to provide the Secretary of the Department of Finance and Administration with enforcement and regulation authority, to provide the Secretary of the Department of Finance and Administration with the authority to seize nicotine delivery systems at the FSM ports of entry and require disposal and/or proper storage of seized nicotine delivery systems and to require records, record keeping on seized, disposed, and/or stored nicotine delivery systems for six years and for other purposes.
Madam Chair, Conman.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker and members. I move for passage of CP number 23-11 for first reading.
Any second? It's been moved and seconded that Congress pass on first reading, CB number 23-11CD1 on first reading. Discussion?
Mr. Speaker.
Madam Chair, Conman, you have the floor.
Yes, the purpose of this bill is to address the side effects of tobacco itself and also the side effects of e-cigarettes because of high content of nicotine, which is a negative, bad effects on the children and adolescents. And we already have data that 65% of our adults in FSM are diagnosed with cancer, and it is due to tobacco use. Because of all these facts, the Health Department really encourages us to have a good control or on tobacco. Thank you very much once again, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Any further discussion?
Speaker.
Thank you.
Chairman Figuerre?
If the importation of the tobacco and nicotine, if it's detrimental to health, why put in storage for six years? Why not destroy immediately?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Speaker and Chairman Figuerre, these are the, we're still in the process of making amendments on this bill, but we definitely want to ban and destroy the e-cigarettes once it comes in. It's just that we don't have the capacity to destroy the e-cigarettes at the moment. Thank you.
Well.
You still have the floor, Chairman Figuerre.
That's where I'm confused. You said no capacity. Why can't just take those e-cigarettes and burn them? And what's the capacity requirement?
For, for that, we have to go through, I'm sorry, Mr. Speaker.
Go ahead, go ahead.
We have to go through the comm to properly burn those, or if it's the suitable way of getting rid of e-cigarettes. For now, we, they're still in the process of deciding the best method to destroy them. Thank you.
Vice Speaker, you seem to.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Speaker. I wish to also register my concern with this bill. I'm not, not a medical personnel or a doctor, but being a, an advocate, devil advocate on this bill, that I don't see a reason why we would ban a type of product that is harmful, but other products that are also harmful were given a break in either not totally banning. And another issue that I also have with, just, we're talking about banning the importation of this product. How about the locally grown? If the intention of this bill is for the, for health purposes, to reduce the importation of nicotine cigarette, how about locally grown cigarette which some of our communities, it's, it's customary to have cigarette? And how would we deal with banning them from practicing a part of their custom where you offer not food but a cigarette to a visitor? And when a community meeting, you were serving cigarette instead of food, and it is part of their custom? So that's where I'm a bit confused and reluctant to support this bill if it's gonna impose a total ban or leading up to a total ban on this kind of product, because then it's not totally controlling it. Thank you.
Point of admiration.
Short, short recess. Congress is back in session. Chairman Christian, you.
I move for the previous question.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the question for a previous question. So if no objection, debate is now closed. We will now vote on first reading to CB number 23-11CD1. Chief Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Senator Abella Alfonso?
Yes.
Senator Arriados? Senator Asher?
Yes.
Senator Christian?
Aye Mayng.
Senator Figuerre? Senator Collin?
Yes.
Senator Conman?
Yes.
Floor Leader Lawrence?
Aye Mayng.
Senator Marar? Senator Numea?
Yes.
Vice Speaker Romolo?
No.
Senator Segura?
Yes.
Senator Urosamal? Speaker Moses?
Yes.
Mr. Speaker, we have 12 yeses and one no.
With that, Congress has passed on first reading, CB number 23-11CD1 on first reading. Next, next bill, Chief Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Under the Bill Calendar now is Congressional Bill number 23-61CD2 for second and final reading. CB number 23-61CD2 is a bill for knock to amend section 506 of Title 24 of the Code of the Federated States of Magnesia, annotated by putting an exemption for longline fishing in the closed area, closed area, the 12-mile area seaward of the territorial sea, not to extend beyond 24 nautical miles from the baseline from which the breadth of the territorial sea is measured and for other purposes.
Chairman Numea?
Yeah, move for the adoption of second and final reading of this bill.
Any second? It's been moved and seconded that Congress pass on second and final reading, CB number 23-61CD2. Discussion? Short recess. Congress is back in session. We're still on discussion to CB number 23-61CD2 for second and final reading. Chairman Numea?
Mr. Speaker, I move for the deferment of this particular bill to tomorrow's calendar.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress defer its action on CB number 23-61CD2 to tomorrow's calendar. Any objection? If none, we will vote on said motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion carried. Congress has deferred its action to CB number 23-61CD2 for second and final reading to tomorrow's calendar. Next bill, Chief Clerk.
Mr. Speaker, as of now, we do not have any more bills.
Point of privilege, Mr. Speaker.
Your point, Vice Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I wish to raise on a point of privilege to introduce an individual who's in the gallery observing our session this morning. I ask that we give him a round of applause, the Chairman of the R&amp;D Committee and at the Chuk State Legislature House of Representatives, the Honorable Arthur Irons.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Speaker. So, next item, Chief Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. We're now on item 20, Resolution Calendar. The first resolution under the Resolution Calendar is Congressional Resolution number 23-124 for adoption. CR number 23-124 is a resolution expressing the sincere appreciation of the 23rd Congress of the Federated States of Magnesia to Mr. Shochi.
of the Federated States of Magnesia to Mr. Shochi Sato for his dedication to a strong friendship and partnership between the Federated States of Magnesia, FSM, and Japan as the former Ambassador of Japan to the FSM and Executive Director of the Association for Promotion of International Cooperation.
Congress is back in session. Madam Chair, Conman, I believe you are the introducer of the resolution.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker and everyone. I'll yield the floor to Chairman of RND. Thank you.
Chairman Numea.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I think the rationale behind this resolution is to recognize and applaud the work of some of our partners who have gone beyond the norms of duties to really promote the interests of FSM abroad and also provide opportunities that have resulted in significant economic and social benefits to our citizens.
Short recess, short recess. Congress is back in session. Chairman Numea, you still have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move for the adoption of said resolution.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress adopt CR number 23 dash 124. Discussion? Chairman Numea.
Yes, as I was saying, we've already reaped significant economic and social benefits from the work of these gentlemen. Having left his post as a former Ambassador of Japan to FSM, he went on to assume other responsibility in their international arena, but still he was able to reconnect to FSM in really promoting and advancing a lot of the interests, especially for our students. Xavier High School is a classic example. A lot of the graduates from Xavier High School have found easy access to Soviet University, which is one of the best universities in Japan. But more so than that, there is also that affinity between communities in Japan and also Chuk and FSM. So those kind of noble acts, to me, is very laudable and one that we can really commend and we cannot thank the gentlemen enough for it. So this is a token to signal our appreciation for this kind of partnership, which can really yield resounding positive impact on our economy. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Chairman Numea. Any further discussion?
Speaker.
Vice Speaker Romalo.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I had expressed my reservation on this resolution the last session of Congress, mainly not to speak, not to just oppose this resolution for the sake of opposing it, but I find it difficult to, to support this resolution where there are other individuals who have also contributed to, and a significant support to our development, either a foreign individual or local, our founding fathers, for example, late Padua Henry left, but he's still contributing in any form to the development of this country. Other leaders who have gone, who have left their post, but yet they're still also contributing. So with that, are we, can we do, keep doing that to anybody who have left their post and contribute to our nation's development or in any way or any form? So that's my reservation on this resolution, Mr. Speaker. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Speaker. Chairman Christian, you have the floor.
Mr. Speaker, when the manager of a baseball team comes in and congratulates one member of that baseball team, he alienates without meaning to the other members of the team. So is a classroom where a teacher picks one student and says, "You are the best student in the classroom." Well, maybe it's true, but the effect of that is that every other student now feels down. Why, how about me? So we must be careful, because it's not just Japan, but there's China, Australia, and the United States, whose ambassadors have left, but to some extent continue to remember us through their actions. Why we pick this one person, I can see some connection to former presidents of the FSM. So I would, I would caution Congress in making this kind of a choice, to pick one individual and say, "You've damn done really good," at the expense of alienating maybe 10 or 15 other good ambassadors. Period. That's the end of my statement.
And, Mr. Speaker, if I may.
Continue.
I thought last, during our last session, we inquire that some members believe that we have already a resolution on this individual. So I thought we inquire that they.
I believe that there was a confusion. That ambassador, who is also part of AIPIC, was Peter Sato. So there was a mix-up in one more discussion, and I think it was clarified. So any, short recess. We're still on discussion of the adoption of CR number 23 dash 124. Any further discussion?
Mr. Speaker, I move to defer this resolution.
Second.
To Friday.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress defer its action on CR number 23 dash 124. Discussion? No discussion, no objection. We will vote on the said motion. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Congress has now deferred its action on the adoption of CR number 23 dash 124. Next resolution, Chief Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Under the Resolution Calendar now is Congressional Resolution number 23 dash 111 for adoption. CR number 23 dash 111 is a resolution ratifying the agreement under the United Nations Convention on the Law of the Sea on the Conservation and Sustainable Use of Marine Biological Diversity of Areas Beyond National Jurisdiction, or the BBNJ Agreement.
Thank you, Chief Clerk. Chairman Christian.
Mr. Speaker, I shall move for its adoption.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that Congress adopt CR number 23 dash 11. Discussion? Please note that this is a treaty and will be, we will vote on it by roll call of members. So discussion? Any discussion? If none, question has been called for and no objection. We will now vote by roll call of members. Chief Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Senator Abel Alfonso.
Aye aye.
Senator Arrietaz.
Yes.
Senator Asher.
Yes.
Senator Christian.
Aye aye.
Senator Figueroa.
Yes.
Senator Cullen.
Yes.
Senator Conman.
Yes.
Floor Leader Lawrence. Senator Marar. Senator Nemea.
Yes.
Vice Speaker Romalo.
Aye aye.
Senator Segura.
Yes.
Senator Urosomal. Speaker Moses.
Aye.
Mr. Speaker, all 13 members that are present voted for the said resolution.
Thank you, Chief Clerk. Please take note on your Resolution Calendar. CR number 23 dash 37, CR number 23 dash 60, CR number 23 dash 62, and CR number 23 dash 67 were introduced during the September session in, and July, so it's been several sessions without any action and, and it should be removed from our Resolution Calendar. And if the chairs of those committees for these four nominations, can please take a look at it? Maybe we need a resolution requesting the President to resubmit. And we didn't take action on them because we had, we lacked the numbers to act on nominations during the past several sessions, so. So with that, next resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. As of now, we do not have any more resolutions.
Speaker, short recess.
Short recess.
Move to go back.
Congress is back in session. Vice Speaker, you.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Wish to, is that we go back to a calendar, bill calendar.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress go back up to item number 19, which is the bill calendar. And if no objection, we are now on item number 19. Vice Speaker, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Wish to withdraw CP number 23 dash 97 and put on bill calendar for action.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress place CB number 23 dash 97 on today's bill calendar for action. Discussion? If none, we will vote on the said motion to place CB number 23 dash 97 on today's calendar for action. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion carried. CB number 23 dash 97 has been placed on today's calendar for action. Chief Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Under the bill calendar now is Congressional Bill number 23 dash 97 for first reading. CB number 23 dash 97 is a bill for an act to further amend Public Law number 20 dash 178, as amended by Public Laws numbers 21 dash 01, 21 dash 07, 21 dash 36, 21 dash 53, 21 dash 56, 21 dash 102, 21 dash 115, 21 dash 137, 21 dash 165, 21 dash 178, 111 dash 200, 21 dash 218, 21 dash 226, 21 dash 249, 22 dash 22, 22 dash 27, 22 dash 63, 22 dash 73, 22 dash 82, 22 dash 138, and 22 dash 145, by amending sections 5 and 6 thereof to change the use and lapse date of funds previously appropriated therein to fund public projects and social programs for the people of Yap, Kosai, Ponpe, and Chuk States and for other purposes.
Chairman Figueroa.
Move for the passage of the said bill on first reading.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress pass on first reading CB number 23 dash 97. Floor Leader, any rules?
I move that Congress suspends any relevant rule that may impede our actions on the placement of the said bill.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress suspend the rules that may impede our actions on taking action on CB number 23 dash 97. Discussion?
Question.
No discussion and no objection, we will vote on the said motion. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion carried. The rules are now suspended. We're on discussion of CB number 23 dash 97. Any, any discussion?
Question.
If none and no objection.
Mr. Speaker.
Chairman Christian.
Maybe Senator, Vice Speaker may, just want to very briefly explain if there's any change in this.
Vice Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. The changes on this item, originally was appropriated to purchase a vessel. Then the vessel was purchased, the money was there, repossessed, go back, then we, two times I amended to use for the tritocking of the vessel. So until now, it hasn't been moved. The tridoc have been scheduled and rescheduled four times, and this money hasn't been moved. So I'm merely amending it so that the operation money that we have could be paid to the tridoc and this one will use to help the operation if we take out what the funding has been deposited and saved for the operation, so we can move for the scheduling of the tridoc. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Speaker. Any further discussion?
So, Speaker. Vice Speaker, are you talking about the 500,000?
Chairman, can you press your mic?
I don't know what happened to this mic.
Move it closer.
I'm just asking about the, what, is this the 500,000 that you amended?
Yes.
Oh, what happened? Okay, Speaker, thank you.
Okay, if no further discussion, I believe a question was called for, so we will, so no objection, debate is closed. We will vote on the passage of CB number 23 dash 97 on first reading by roll call of members. Chief Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Senator Abel Alfonso.
Aye aye.
Senator Arrietaz.
Yes.
Senator Asher.
Yes.
Senator Christian.
Aye aye.
Senator Figueroa.
Yes.
Senator Cullen.
Yes.
Senator Conman.
Yes.
Floor Leader Lawrence.
Aye aye.
Senator Marar.
Yes.
Senator Nemea.
Yes.
Vice Speaker Romalo.
Aye aye.
Senator Segura.
Yes.
Senator Urosomal. Speaker Moses.
Yes.
Mr. Speaker, all 13 members that are present voted for the said bill under first reading.
Thank you. With that, Congress has passed on first reading CB number 23 dash 97. Next bill, Chief Clerk.
Mr. Speaker, as of now, we do not have any more bills.
Speaker.
Chairman Figueroa.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I have two bills that I want to place on the bill calendar for action. They're public projects. I move to place Congress Bill number 23 dash 99 and 23 dash 100.
Any second? It's been moved and seconded that Congress place on today's bill calendar for action CB number 23 dash 99 and CB 23 dash 100. Discussion? Please note that the rules are still suspended.
Speaker, these two bills are, have to do with the public projects for Yap State.
Okay, any further discussion on the placement of the two bills? If none, we will vote. All those in favor of the said motion, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Congress has now placed on today's calendar for action CB number 23 dash 99 and CB 23 dash 100. Chief Clerk, first bill.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Under the bill calendar now is Congressional Bill number 23 dash 99 for first reading. CB number 23 dash 99 is a bill for an act to further amend Public Law number 22 dash 42, as amended by Public Laws numbers 22 dash 60, 22 dash 80, 22 dash 103, 22 dash 141, 23 dash 10, 23 dash 40, and 23 dash 57, by amending section 9 thereof to change the use of funds previously appropriated to fund the capital and human resources development of the national government of the Federated States of Magnesia for the fiscal year ending September 30th, 2022, and for other purposes.
Chairman Figueroa.
Bill on first reading.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress pass on first reading CB number 23 dash 99. Discussion? I have a short question. What is being amended?
It's on section 7. Page please. Page 4. Page four. That reads Yap Roads Maintenance and Improvement and Purchasing of Heavy Equipment. Yeah, we're just changing the, to include purchasing of equipment. Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. Chairman Christian, you have the floor.
I just spoke to Senator Urosamal, and he said that he's not in agreement with Senator Figuer. Well, he's lost that seat, so we can move on.
Any further discussion?
Question.
If no objection, question is closed. Question has been called for, and no objection. Debate is now closed. We will now vote on First Reading CB number 23 dash 99 by roll call of members. Chief Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Senator Abel Alfonso?
Amen.
Senator Arretoz? Senator Asher? Senator Christian?
Amen.
Senator Figuer? Senator Colin?
Yes.
Senator Conman?
Yes.
Floor Leader Lawrence?
Amen.
Senator Marar? Senator Numia?
Yes.
Vice Speaker Romolo?
Amen.
Senator Segura?
Yes.
Senator Urosamal? Speaker Moses?
Aye.
Mr. Speaker, all 13 members that are present voted for the said bill under First Reading.
With that, Congress has passed on First Reading CB number 23 dash 99. Next bill, Chief Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Under the Bill Calendar now is Congressional Bill Number 23 dash 100 for First Reading. CB number 23 dash 100 is a bill for an act to further amend Public Law Number 19 dash 124 as amended by Public Laws Numbers 19 dash 133, 19 dash 140, 19 dash 150, 20 dash 05, 20 dash 15, 20 dash 33, 20 dash 48, 20 dash 63, 20 dash 71, 20 dash 156, 20 dash 175, 21 dash 22, 21 dash 52, 21 dash 146, 21 dash 195, 21 dash 213, 21 dash 244, 22 dash 62, 22 dash 111, and 23 dash 55 by amending Sections 2 and 6 thereof to change the use and lapse date of certain funds previously appropriated therein to fund priority infrastructure projects and other programs for Yap, Kosai, Pompei, and Chuk States, and for other purposes.
Chairman Figuer?
Move for the passage of the, of Congress Bill Number 23 dash 100 on First Reading.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress pass on First Reading CB number 23 dash 100. Discussion?
Question.
If no discussion and no objection, debate is now closed. We will now vote by roll call of members. Chief Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Senator Abel Alfonso?
Amen.
Senator Arretoz? Senator Asher? Senator Christian?
Amen.
Senator Figuer? Senator Colin? Senator Conman? Floor Leader Lawrence? Senator Marar? Senator Numia? Vice Speaker Romolo?
Amen.
Senator Segura? Senator Urosamal? Speaker Moses?
Aye.
Mr. Speaker, all 13 members that are present voted for the said bill under First Reading.
With that, Congress has passed on First Reading CB number 23 dash 100. Short recess. Congress is back in session. Chief Clerk, next bill.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. As of now, we do not have any more bills.
Next item.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. That is item 21, Introduction of Bills and Resolutions.
Chairs and members, if you have any measures to introduce, please pass them forward to Chief Clerk. Next item, Chief Clerk.
Miscellaneous business for item 22, Mr. Speaker.
Any miscellaneous business? If none, no objection. Next, next item.
Item 23, Announcements, Mr. Speaker.
Chairman Figuer, announcement, any? Madam Chair Abel Alfonso?
No announcements at the moment, Mr. Speaker.
Chairman Arretoz?
Thank you, Speaker, no announcement.
Chairman Christian?
No announcement, but while I have the floor, may I request that the delegation from Chuk and Kosai please indicate to the Chairman who from those, the Constitution of the Committee on External Affairs.
Thank you, Chairman Christian. That's duly noted, and I hope the three Senators can work with the Chief Clerk to find their placements.
Mr. Speaker, my boss, Yolanda, just sent me a note that says, "External Affairs Earing Tomorrow, 9:00 a.m. on FSM Ambassador to UN in Geneva nomination of Aguilino Susaya." So, please take note tomorrow morning at 9:00.
So, members, please take note of that.
All members are invited.
That's tomorrow at 9:00?
Tomorrow at 9:00.
Chairman Colin, do you have any announcements?
Soze, thank you, Speaker.
Chairman Numia?
I have none, Mr. Speaker.
Madam Chair Conman?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and everyone. Attorney Yolanda just gave me a note that we have Health and Social Affairs Committee have a hearing today at 3:00 p.m. on Social Security Board nomination of Ms. Lee Narun. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Senator Segura, any announcement?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I do not have an announcement at this time, but I'm going to ask that the Kosai delegation meet right after the session today here to go over a few matters. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator Segura. Senator Marar?
No announcement.
Thank you. Senator Asher?
Thank you, Speaker. None at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Speaker, any announcement?
No announcement, Mr. Speaker. Thank you.
Thank you. Floor Leader, any announcements, if any or none, your usual motion.
Sotra. None. I move that Congress stands in recess until tomorrow morning at 10:00.
Any second. It's been moved and seconded that Congress stand in recess until 10:00 a.m. tomorrow. No objections. We will vote. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Motion carried. Congress stands in recess until 10:00 a.m. tomorrow.